Joe.
Here.
John.
Here again.
I'm here again. Angela.
Here.
I see you. Alex.
Here.
Justin.
Here.
Jen.
Here.
Jane.
Here.
Pete.
Here.
And Mary.
Here, I was here before too.
Yes, you are. We saw you come in just about a minute after the meeting started. So now where we're missing Lisa and Julie. So that we still have ten, ten people here. At this point, I'd like to ask if any member of the public has any comments on the matters on tonight's agenda? If you do, please use the hand raise feature. And I see none. And, okay, we'll move on. The consent agenda has the minutes of the Board of Education Special Meeting of February fifteen twenty twenty-two. It is would anyone like to take those off of the consent agenda and make changes to them? Joe?
I just saw one misspelling. Okay, in the public comment, the first, the first person is Ashley Tenhove. Her husband was the second speaker. For some reason, the name was something different. Ten, Ten Oak or something. I'm not sure. That's the only thing I saw.
All right. Do I have a motion to adopt the minutes of February fifteen twenty-two, twenty twenty-two as amended by Mr. Bell?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. And keep them up, please, so that Danielle can count them. All those opposed? All those abstaining?
I'm gonna abstain because I can't find them.
Okay, it's nine votes to zero to one, and the minutes are adopted as amended. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate that. Okay, update on COVID nineteen. Megan, we've been getting your reports right along.
And that's exactly what we're gonna do. We're, we're gonna continue to showcase what we have before us. And so if you will indulge me for the moment, I will show you the slideshow that we have. The difference that you're going to see, especially because we have just shifted as of March first to the recommend but not required masking. So this is where I do want to be a little bit more in your face regarding any COVID infections that we have. Because we want people to know that recommendation still stands. So that becomes important that they have a level of knowledge of any transmission in the schools. So we have re-resorted back to doing the emails. That will continue for this week and next week. But we do, and we will continue to have all of the information on our website. So people who want to be able to track what's happened week to week, as well as overall, can also access this information. So our facts and figures as of today. We did over the, and I did update it for the two that we had today. We had one over the weekend and we had one last week. So really, four new cases that have happened at Chappagh since our last presentation. Of those, we only had two who, two contacts that were both alerted. And they have taken the proactive measures to make certain that there is no spread and that they are being mindful of their own health as we continue to watch for COVID. So again, these numbers are the most accurate numbers that we have as of seven thirty-four on March seventh. So there's nothing that, that is not.
Megan, could I ask you about those?
Please do, yes.
I, I think because you've gone to a change in protocol on masking, you might want to consider giving us a set of numbers from March first on so that we can see whether, what increases, and then we need that put in context of what previous periods showed.
If it's okay, what I would like to do, Greg, with your permission, can I just show what we have actually on the website? Because that's actually where it would capture. And if it's something that the board would prefer to see, I'm happy to showcase it the way that we have on our website in which you see the weekly totals. That's right there on our website. So I just take this information and so you have a running total. But if the board prefers to see the week by week, I am very comfortable presenting it because it's the information that we.
Well, I, I don't know. I mean, we, you know, we had fairly low case rates prior in the, in the weeks prior to, to the present week. But I think that the interest of the board is going to be on a going forward basis, whether or not we are seeing any kind of an increase. I think we need to be bird dogging that. And I'm, I'm interested in knowing whether or not, since masks have been declared optional, I'm guessing you're probably, you have fewer than twenty-five percent of the students wearing masks in the schools now.
Yeah, I, I would say by the end of last week, we're about thirty percent of our students who are still masked. I, I would agree. I think we are continuing to see a decline. So we are probably about twenty-five to twenty percent of our students right now who we do see coming in with masks.
Yeah, and I recognize that that's a little bit anecdotal because you're not counting them. But the point, the point, I think, is we, we need to know whether or not this, this change in the masking protocol is creating potential or is creating in, increases in, in infections. And if it is, then obviously, we're gonna, we're gonna want you to take another look at that situation.
I completely respect and honor how you're trying to see it because I think that is the, the best way to operate. And I can tell you, we continue to contact trace, and that is atypical right now because most districts are no longer doing the contact tracing. For us, because of the fact that we were always able to figure out who were primary contacts, and then we watched for any potential spread that happened within the school. Because we continue that practice, it is even more important that we show that there is not spread occurring in the school. So I think what you're asking for is incredibly pertinent, and it is one that I'm happy to honor. And Mary, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, I see Mary.
It has come to my attention, which I know people never like to hear me say that. That, that even if the parents have asked the teachers to make sure their, their stu-, their student, their child is masked, that the student, that the teacher may not do that. I don't, we, we wanna let the, the parents make the decisions. But apparently, a six-year-old that feels like taking off their mask can still do that, even though the parent doesn't want them to do that. Now, that I don't like at all.
Yeah, but Mary, what are we gonna do? I mean, are we, what are we gonna, we gonna have the teacher grab the mask and stick it on the student's face? I don't think so. I mean, the problem is, and this, this was what I raised originally, that you know, when the minute you get into peer pressure, it's gonna cause masks to be removed, and often it's gonna be ones parents don't want removed. I don't know how you solve that.
It's exactly what, what is one of my points, too, that I didn't like the fact that, that the student, a six-year-old can do with that, whatever they feel like in class. No matter what their parents want, that does not sit well with me at all.
I, I, I can care with you. I, I think we have shared with our families the importance of communicating their why, to why masking is happening. If they want their child masked, it is important that they embed that reasoning for their child because you're right, it may be that they're susceptible to peer pressure, but it's also one where we provided our psychologist to say, here's why some people may be masked. This is about respecting one another's choices. I can also say to you, there has not been the peer pressure for anybody to take down their masks. Our kids have been incredibly respectful of one another and not encouraging someone to make a different decision. However, I can tell you, yes, there may be some who are looking around and seeing it differently and making their choice. But we are making certain that all decisions are honored, that there is not pressure that is happening for anybody to change their mind. But much like, you know, how someone dresses or how they leave the house. They may leave the house with the sweatshirt on, and then when they get to school, they may have something a little different than what their parents had thought they left the house in. But for us, we recognize it's different when you're talking about health. We are certainly reminding students that if their parents, you know, making certain that what is your parents' decision, but there's no enforcement that comes with that.
Jen?
I just wanted to share that I ran into a faculty member over the weekend who works at one of the elementary schools. And I was asking her how she felt the, the transition has been going, and she said it's been remarkable that the, the students have just been, you know, amazing, and that there's been such great respect among those that are wearing masks and those that aren't. But something she said that I felt like I needed to acknowledge, too, is that, that a lot of the teachers are choosing to wear their masks so that their students don't feel left out for those that are choosing to wear their masks. And that one person in particular who works one-on-one with a student who wears a mask, she chooses to wear her mask so that her, her student doesn't feel out of diff-, at a place or difference. And I just have to give a shout out to everybody who is working to make sure that these students are feeling accepted, regardless of where their own personal stance is, right? Because you got a lot of, of faculty members and adults that would love to just strip their masks off, but they're really considering the well-being of their students in front of them. And I just thought that was a perspective that I really, I didn't think about until I had this conversation. So I just wanted to give a shout out to all of the faculty, teachers and staff.
Well, we have done Shells and Mike Croft were here who can share with you. One of their messages at a staff meeting was meet the kids where they are. That masks should be a fluid. And so if a student comes up with you, to you to talk, meet them where they are. And that has been some of the, the messaging. And I can't tell you how much I'm just impressed with, with our staff. But no, Mary, you're right. We, we can't provide the promise, and we can't make certain that everybody's health decisions are honored. But it is one that I, what I can say is that it's respected. And I don't know if that makes the, all the difference, but it is something that makes a difference for us. So I'm gonna return back to the screen just to continue the conversation. So again, how nicely, that there was respected exceptions of personal decisions. So masks are recommended on buses, no longer required. This is different than what I presented the last time we had the conversation because we knew that that change happened on Monday. We waited until Thursday to make that decision. I wanted to make certain that everything was happening slowly and gradually. We didn't want to do knee-jerk reactions. So there was nothing magical about February twenty-eighth. So February twenty-eighth was when the majority of school districts changed over. We changed over March first. Most changed over on the buses on February twenty-eighth. We waited until that Thursday. Again, we will reduce social distancing as health conditions allow. Based on what we're seeing right now, we're still maintaining the distance, and we're leaning into all of those other mitigation strategies that have been existent at our schools. Other things that we do require, we maintain the five-day isolation period for those testing positive for COVID. And we require that if they are coming back at day six through ten, they must be masked. If they cannot be masked, if they're feeling like that is going to isolate them or in any way make them uncomfortable, then they can stay home during day six through ten. Again, I know that this is different than what other school districts have done, as they say they strongly recommend it. I think we know when we look at the science behind it, that having more exposure, when we know that the viral load is, is still significant, we want to make certain masking is happening. We do continue to contact trace. And again, this becomes important. So we are watching for any signs and symptoms that our decision is not appropriate. We want to make certain that our students are not put in any kind of danger as we continue to slowly evolve through this pandemic. So with that, I appreciate the questions that have been asked. Is there anything additional I can answer?
I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to reports. The board chair's report will be very brief. I did ask the superintendent to poll all the board members to see how comfortable they felt with returning to in-person board meetings. And I am pleased to announce that we have unanimity, unanimity on it, and we will be returning to board, in-person board meetings, commencing with our next board meeting. And I would imagine committee meetings, leave that up to the chairs of the committees to, to make that decision. But my guess is those will probably end up back to in-person as well. And we will keep an eye on it. So that, that's, that's what I had to say. John?
Yeah, I was trying to figure out what I was gonna say tonight to follow up the budget presentation, but I'm gonna, my mind went back to when we first moved to town, and I thought I'd talk tonight about the ghosts of budgets past. When we moved here in nineteen seventy-eight, seventy-nine budget, yeah, the total budget was two million eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars for a lot more students than we have now. And now I realize that an annual budget is just a snapshot in time, and it has, you know, many variable, variables, and it, and, and a lot is, you know, changes from year to year. The budget did decrease over the forty-four years. The budget decreased three times. And that was between twenty fifteen and twenty seventeen, all under Dr. Cosentino's stewardship. The, the twenty seventeen budget actually decreased by two hundred thousand dollars, or point nine-three percent. And contrary to Peter and a couple of the other comments that the budget didn't seem that, that high. Three point four-three is historically on the high side of the budget averages. When you took the past six-year average increase was one point three-five percent. So, um, yeah, I mean, thanks for, for diligently preparing the budget. Can we decrease it? In my mind, I think we can, but I know, I know it's probably gonna go forward. So that's it.
Okay, thank you, John. Megan, your, your report.
Well, thank you again for your attention on, on the budget. And you know, I, I know that no one ever wants to see an increase, but the beautiful news about this is that we had right-sized and trunk budgets as the district were getting smaller. We're now getting bigger. And so I think what a wonderful way that as we're moving forward, we are continuing to look for those opportunities. And speaking of opportunities, our Elementary Innovations Committee. So this consists of Teresa, Ally, Emily, and Kathy, and I are looking at some different models for our elementary school buildings. We have the opportunity, we've had a virtual conversation with East Hartford with their International Baccalaureate Program, and the efforts that have been taken there. We will be doing a visit to Norwalk to look at a micro society school. And what that really does is it gives our elementary students the opportunity to actually have a mini-town. And so our students will be having little businesses within the school, if that's, if that's a model that we look for. And also looking at some arts programs and and also, as I mentioned, and some opportunities if we want to capture some immersive language learning and really getting us students to may learn everything in another language for their early elementary years and really opening up so we can look at providing our students an opportunity to become more of a global citizen versus the, the smaller opportunities. I think it's important that they respect other cultures, other nations, because we're all unified. So I'm really excited to know that that's something that, as a team, we're looking to push our elementary schools forward. And speaking of pushing our elementary schools forward, the Booth Free and Burnham Principal applications are due on March twenty-first. We will quickly shift into interviewing for the position. We want to make certain that as we're able to hand off leadership, that we continue to have that momentum of excellence, and our students are able, and staff as well, to adjust and adapt to new leadership. So that is something that, that timeline is set for us, and it looks like we are meeting all targets for that. And I talked briefly during my presentation about House Bill fifty-two eighty-three. And this is the idea that money follows the child. And so what the state is looking to do is pick up the total cost. So whereas right now, our sending towns pay six thousand eight hundred twenty-three dollars per child, which means that they may limit some of the opportunities because they've also got their own budgets to control for. If the state is taking over that, in addition to the fifty-two hundred dollars that is the state grant, at that point, we would have a more steady funding stream, and we probably have our, our sending districts willing to even send even more students than, than they have in the past. But that is right now, that creates what is the floor. Within this bill, the money follows the child, they would actually take the excess cost formula that the sending towns have and apply that to what the tuition would be for the child. So we'd actually see north of our twelve thousand twenty-three dollars that we get per child and potentially see more dollars behind that. This again is right now in the Education Committee and the Legislature, but we are carefully watching that to see what that does. But I think the part that's very nice is, was we're held harmless. So we at least know what the consistent number is as we look for more opportunities. So with that, Chairman Kava, I think everybody has heard enough of my voice, and we got a nice update last week regarding our athletics. So I will turn it over to you unless there are any questions of me.
Okay. The next item on the agenda are committee reports, and the only one on here is Julie's Strategic Long Range Planning Committees, and she is not here. I don't know if there's anyone else who wants to add anything. If not, we'll move on with the agenda, Megan.
I'll just add, so we were able to meet with our consultant, and we had the opportunity to review the comments of January thirtieth community conversation. And we have now established a survey that will go out to our entire community. That survey is being wrapped up now and will be sent out to everyone on Wednesday. So watching for those surveys, feedback is very important. We are only going to be able to improve when people provide us with the honesty of what they're looking for, what we may be lacking, or even just telling us things that they really appreciate, because that way we can continue to invest in those moments. So that will be going out on Wednesday. So that was the update.
Okay. Good. We'll go on to new business then. And I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Croft, overview of grading practices at S V S. Is it just, is it just Mr. Croft or also Mr. Shells?
I, if, 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 if I can give a brief answer to that question, I think it's both of us. I might be doing a bunch of the talking, but Mr. Shells will also provide some context and some insight of which he has plenty, especially as someone who has come in mid-process here and, and supported this process nicely. Mr. Shells, I don't know if you want to give any introductory comments?
Don, you're, you're muted.
People are usually grateful for that, Greg. And this, this time it wasn't so good, though. I started to say, also, I'm always called on right when my dogs start to bark. I hope that doesn't happen this time. I started to say, you will hear from Mr. Croft about the nuts and bolts of the project, which predated my tenure, but I was delighted to find ensuing when I started at Chappagh. And he'll talk about the work that his team built up and that we've continued to build up together this year. So Mike, take it away.
Thank you. And, and for those of you who are on the Curriculum and Educational Programming Committee, I hope that you can tolerate a little bit of some recycled metaphors here and a little bit of repeated information. But I think you'll find this to be a different presentation in some ways from one that you saw last week, in that it's a little bit higher level, so to speak. There will be some detail, but there will also be a little bit more of a broad view, and I, I think a little bit more emphasis on the next steps and seeking some, some input regarding those. So with that, I'm gonna share my screen, which I think I'm technologically able to do. Okay. So as Don said, this was a project that was underway for a time, and even one that had a lot of interest before I returned to Chappagh in two thousand nineteen. Kim Gallo had long had an interest in, in pursuing improvements to some of the things that plague, some of the problems that we're gonna talk about here that plague grading systems in schools generally. Nothing specific to Chappagh, but the, the difficulties and the opportunities for improvement that are in every school system and every school related to grading, exist within a context of, of that school and of that school system. And that's because grading is a really important part of the academic culture. And I won't belabor that point because I think it's probably self-evident to everybody here who went to a school that had grades. There is an impact. It is often visceral, and it is long-lasting. And that impact is, is varied and complex and positive and negative. But I don't think anyone here would dispute that, that there is an impact on the individual and the collective learning experience that, that grades and the practices of, of individual teachers and departments and, and schools and districts. All of that has a lasting and significant impact. And so in two thousand nineteen, before the pandemic, of course, we recognized that as a school that has grades, we had an opportunity to review and revise, to examine our blind spots, to recognize the potential harm that grades can, can bring. And also to maximize the positives that an effective and enlightened grading infrastructure can confer on a school. And we started as a faculty to examine our practices and to examine the literature, literature related to grading and to develop an informal and evolving grading practices mission. And I'll share a handful of bullet points from that, that mission here. And, and the two that I want to highlight because they're the ones that we addressed with our initial changes. The, the two elements of the mission are that we wanted grades to accurately communicate students' mastery of course goals, and we wanted grades to promote student motivation to learn. Now, grades motivate students. There's no question about that. We just wanted to align the motivation that grades provide and promote with our goals. We didn't want grades to provide a motivation that was contrary to the efforts of the teachers and the efforts of the school as a whole. We wanted our grading to align with our core values and guiding beliefs. You can see over my left shoulder here. Many of you know those like the back of your hands. Thanks for paying such great attention to our schools as volunteer board members. We wanted to prepare students for the executive expectations of the world at large. And I, I think I'll make a little more clear what, what we mean by that in, in a few minutes. And we wanted to clearly and, and effectively communicate to colleges. We also wanted to take a Hippocratic oath in a way when approaching grading. We wanted to make sure that we did no harm. We know that grades are certainly perceived to be, be a high-stakes thing in, in high school, at the very least, and and I think it's fair to say that they are a high-stakes thing in many ways. And so we wanted to make sure that any adjustments that we make would not have any negative effects on the students who were in front of us at the time, that their, their college or post-secondary prospects would not be put in any kind of jeopardy because of, of shifts that we made. And we have that in the front of our minds all the time, is that the, the students who are, are juniors, they're gonna be applying, and they're gonna be sending their transcripts. And we need to make sure that in the, in the service of long-term goals, that there aren't any short-term sacrifices. One of the things that we really wanted to avoid was the commoditization of, of learning. And some of you who have children in the power school age probably know what I'm talking about here. The online learning, or online grade calculation and dissemination communication mechanisms that I think probably started coming into common use in maybe two thousand seven, six, seven, eight, something like that, maybe a little earlier, earlier, are in many ways a good thing. They provide transparency and they facilitate communication with parents. Are in many ways a good thing. They provide transparency and they facilitate communication with parents about how students are doing. But in many ways, it also. Turns. The process of learning unintentionally into a process of collecting points as opposed to a process of. Of accruing experience, wisdom, knowledge, insight, skills. And that's what we really want. And I'll talk a little bit more about this piece in a little while too, in case it's. Not clear at this point. So we had a a faculty-wide study. We also formed a middle school grading practices study group. In November of two thousand twenty. And a high school grading practices study group in in November of two thousand twenty and those groups met through May every week. Examining the literature, looking at the processes that other other schools use. Report cards that other schools use. All of the methods that are built into teaching and learning in general and the ways that they intersect with grades. We examine those kind of the high. View literature and also the the finely grained detail of of schools that neighbor us and schools across the world. We looked at report cards and practices of schools across the world. And in middle school, we adopted a couple of of changes this year. And the first is really aimed at that. That that challenge in our mission and our and our little informal mission there of of accuracy. We wanted grades. To accurately report to students, to parents, to schools that students transfer to, to to any place that looks at the transcript. Accurate information about what the student knows and can do. And and here I'll briefly highlight. What what we sometimes call the problem of the B minus. When we have a student who has a B minus on their report card in math, let's say, does that mean that the student. Really can do the math quite well, but doesn't do their homework? Or does it mean that the student. Struggles and and doesn't have a lot of the content mastered, but is very diligent, participates well. Does all the homework or is it somewhere in the middle? Does the student do a lot of the homework and master a lot of the content? Well, we don't really know in in a typical and traditional grading practice. And so the adjustment here is that students are graded separately on learning habits and achievement. And I'm gonna. Not spend a ton of time looking at. Our middle school learning habits that we developed through. An internal process and our own ideas about the the habits that made it likely, not always guaranteed, but made it likely that students would learn in class. We also looked at a lot of middle and high school and elementary school examples of of. Learning habits or learning practices. That that schools use and and ours that we've settled on our engagement, settled on for now at least. Engagement, perseverance, responsibility and self-awareness. And. This is not intended to be a process that. Just has another adult telling the student what they're good or bad at. This is a process that we bring the students into. We. Engage them in in a significant self-assessment and reflection process and goal-setting process. And. The the grades that ultimately are on the report card come through a dialogue between the the student and the teacher. The other change that we that we so so well, let me let me go back to that first bullet just for a moment. So the the idea is that the student has an achievement grade that says. Can they do the math in that quarter? Did they meet the math goals? And they also have learning habits grades that tell. A story to the student, to the teacher, to subsequent teachers, to the to the parents. About the habits that the student demonstrates in class that are distinct and many times related to. The math achievement that the student has relative to the course goal. So. If your student has a B minus as their achievement grade in seventh grade math, you know what that means. To, I think, a much larger degree than you did twelve months ago at Chapag. And it means that your student can master almost all of the content. Sometimes with a little bit of support. The other change that that we made is by capping the weight or the. The contribution maybe of formative assessment grades in achievement and format assessment is is practice. It's the learning activities and the information that teachers gather over the daily course of things to. Make decisions about what should happen next to to help students make decisions about where they should put their time, energy and strategic thinking. And. We really believe. That. Formative assessment and the grades that come from it should have a very limited role in establishing a student's achievement grade. And the comparison that I'll make here is is to a driver's test. If you're sixteen years old and you are have you get your permit and you go try to parallel park for the first time. And you stink at it and hopefully there aren't a lot of cars around when you try. That should be a low stakes. Experience. And it shouldn't have any impact on whether or not you pass your driving test when you're sixteen and a half. Six months later. What should matter six months later when you take your driving test is whether or not you can parallel park. And so the first day that you're dividing fractions, if you do, if you don't get it and you do poorly on those learning activities. But you learn very effectively how to divide fractions over the next couple of weeks and you do a great job in a test and a project. Well, we think that that's what should be communicated on your report card, that you can divide fractions, not that you couldn't divide fractions the first try. So. These learning habits and the the goal of accuracy are intended to gain. Clarity and accuracy in our our grades. As well as to motivate students to aim for those learning habits. We want to identify, celebrate, label, engagement, perseverance, responsibility, self-awareness, challenge students to. Figure out what it looks like in each of their classes and. That's some of the work that we're doing. For high school, we are taking a more cautious approach. Partly because we recognize. Our Hippocratic. Obligations to our sophomores and juniors who will be sending their transcripts to colleges, freshmen also, of course. And so the changes that we have for high school and these also apply to the middle school is that we're not using an A through F scale or we are, sorry, we are using an A through F scale. We're not using a zero through one hundred scale. And the idea here is that we're not going to pretend at precision. If you have a zero to one hundred scale, it's nice mathematically and it helps you calculate something. But it also implies that as a teacher, as a student even, that you have one hundred and one different gradients of achievement. And. I don't think that that's true. And I don't think anyone here is going to be able to confidently tell us what the difference is between a student who has an eighty-two. In dividing fractions and a student who has an eighty-three in dividing fractions. Our focus. Instead is on describing levels of learning, levels of proficiency, levels of achievement. And with an A through F scale, we have thirteen different levels of learning and achievement that appear on a report card. Now that's still a lot and it's pretty hard to tell the difference between. A B and a B minus in dividing fractions, but we think that it's much more possible. Than finding one hundred and one different gradients in dividing fractions. And this has led us to a a very positive outcome in my view, and that is an emphasis. On grading through descriptions of learning, not points and percentages. So that students and teachers can understand what a description of success is. At each point in the learning process. And I would contend that it's not. It's not something that can just fall to a percentage. And and here's where I apologize for repeated metaphors with our C E P. Committee members because my examples are the are the pilot and and the baseball batter. A pilot with a ninety-four percent. Successful landing rate. Is is not my pilot. And he doesn't get an A or she doesn't get an A from me. And a baseball player with a thirty-four percent success rate. Gets an A and I want that person or softball player. I want that person batting in the middle of my lineup. And I I I believe that that's success. And so what I mean is that. A percentage, a simple percentage of success is not an a valid descriptor of of proficiency of mastery. But that those. Levels and descriptions of mastery. Are specific to the activity. And so what we have here is a a general description of what an A is. A B, a C, a D and F. At Chapag. And for each assignment, it's up to the teacher and the students in in many cases, increasing increasing number of cases up to the teacher and the student to. To determine, to communicate, to flesh out, to talk about, to keep present in the front of the, especially the student's mind. But also the teacher's mind, what success looks like, what quality looks like, what good work looks like. What does it mean to think like an historian and to write like an historian? What does it mean to calculate like a scientist? What does it mean to analyze like an artist? All of these things are are described in ways that are meaningful and real for the students and the learning in the class. In a way that a seventy-eight percent or eighty percent equals a B minus. Really is never going to be. And so here you 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 see. These descriptors. Of. What grades mean at Chapag right now. I'm I'm plowing ahead. I don't know if that's because I'm on Zoom or because no one's raised their digital hand. But I I'm happy to be interrupted if anybody, I assume I'm not on mute. I think somebody would have said something. Yeah, I'm getting a thumbs up. That's good. I will. I will continue to plow ahead. I get and I have a hand raised too. Okay, terrific. Couple of hands raised. I think I I guess I'm doing the calling. I saw John first.
Yeah, um. I'm following what you're saying about the A through F scale, although. I'm trying to determine. How would class rankings? Be established when you have, you know. On the grading system, on the numerical scale. You have, you know. Let's say forty. Levels, tiers. Rather than thirteen. I'm just, and when you get a high achiever, A pluses. I'm not understanding how you distinguish who the. You know, the class.
John, I couldn't have planted a, I I couldn't have planted a question that would bring me more joy. And you can take my answer with a grain of salt because I am not the boss. And therefore. My answer is just. It's just my answer and and Megan can mute me or interrupt me if she wants or or Don, you can start, you know, shouting. Things if you want, but. A couple of things. One is that we don't have a class rank at Chapag. We don't have a class rank at Chapag, but what we do have is a process that yields a valedictorian, a salutatorian and 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 three other members of the of the top five. Academic students. And so obviously we have the means to do that ranking, right? And and we've left intact in our software. In this process, the background calculations that will still allow us to do that. So we haven't changed anything. We we haven't changed anything in that way. We still have assigned a a point value to an A plus, a point value to a C plus. Classes are still weighted based on whether they're AP or honors classes or not. And so all that. Raw material and all that process remains intact. But. So that's the 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 sort of official answer, the the less official answer. That people can take however they want is that if if. Our work leads to a process where we have eliminated the sorting and ranking. Purpose of grades. And focused. Our system on. Communicating. Learning. Directing students at their next steps. Engaging them in considering what is their current level of performance and how they can get to a next level of performance. Then that would be a great success. If I could, you know, torpedo the class rank right now and and. You know, that's not what we're here for, right? Like I I understand the role. I I understand. You know, what what why we have a top five and a valedictorian and salutatorian. Anyways, my answer's been too long already. But we can still do that. We still do all those things. We have the background calculations, but. In, you know, we're not trying to rank and sort here. We're we're just trying to educate. And so. Class rank is is antithetical to that in ways that I would look forward to talking about with anybody. Greg.
Yeah, I have a few questions.
Call on you when you're meeting.
All right. Now I have I have a few questions. No, it's nice to be on this side of it for a change. I I guess I'm trying to figure this out, the the difference between A through F and zero to a hundred. So I'm not really married to either either system. But. Isn't the the isn't the differentiation by by numerical grade or by A through F? The a a factor of an averaging the the, you know, or or maybe maybe they're not equally weighted, but averaging various. Performance that have been evaluated. And if that's the case, then what difference does it make whether it's a zero to a hundred or an A to F? I mean, there's no such thing as and I'm yeah, you're going to have to make it. Something's an eighty-two, something's an eighty-six. I don't know. Is there a difference maybe? But but there certainly is a difference in the overall grade, which is that if you got a lot more. High-end ones, then your your average is going to be higher. So I I I'm trying to figure out mathematically. Why there's a difference between one and the other. I I don't really see that.
Yeah, I thank you. I think it's a really smart question and and the the value in what I'm focused on here. Is really at the assignment level. The value is really at the assignment level. And and here's what I mean by that. If we can. Have an essay that you've written for. E C E economics class. And you get a. Eighty-two on that. I think there's a a a false precision that is embedded in that eighty-two. That is inappropriate. If you have a B minus. Then there's less, maybe there's still some, but there's less false precision. And our conversation as a teacher and a learner as a student. Is more likely to be about your argument. Your understanding and application of. A supply and demand curve. And your. The fluency of your writing, maybe your grammar, maybe your usage. It's more likely to be about those things and less likely to be about the points. And when we can make. A discussion about. Performance. About the learning demonstrated on the one hand, as opposed to the points accrued on the other hand. Then. We've made a small stride, I think.
Well, I I guess then it does raise an interesting question, which is, and I I think this is what you may have been, you 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 may have wanted to say, but you felt like you really couldn't. Or or didn't want to. At the point at which we are no longer using grades. To to differentiate between people, rather, we're using grades to measure someone's performance against themselves or however you're doing this. Why don't we get rid of the valedictorian, salutatorian positions? Why don't we stop talking about the top five? What's the point? I mean, it sounds to me like 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 what you want is to get rid of those differentiations.
I can only think of one reason.
Out of tradition.
I can only think of one reason, and that's because our state university. Gives a scholarship to the valedictorian and the salutatorian. I can't think of another reason in the universe.
Well, don't you think you need a wider audience? You need to tell them that they're being dumb about this, that they should ignore it because we shouldn't have these things. And someone has to be first through the wall. But okay, let me ask you another couple of questions that that came up in your presentation. Can one do well? Irrespective of learning habits. In other words, could one score really high grades and have bad learning habits?
Yeah.
And if so.
Yep.
What's the point of good learning habits?
So. The point of good learning habits is a cup, a twofold, I would say, is I have a twofold answer to your question. One is that if my child. Or the student who just moved into my class, whose report card I'm looking at from last year. Has an A. In math from last year. And low learning habit grades. Then that gives me as the parent, maybe who's trying to understand my child's progress. As a student who's trying to understand my own. Learning. As the teacher who has this student moved into my class. It gives me a different and more accurate picture. Than just having that student have a C. And. Not having a lot of information about the level of work that they can do, the level of learning that they that they have achieved. So it gives me a more accurate view of. Of of who I am as a student, a learner, as as a mathematician at that point. My other answer to your question is that. We. We are going to have students. Who, and they're a relatively small percentage, but there's. but there's way fewer than, you know, way more than zero. We're gonna have students who who work really hard, who are engaged, who are self-aware, who for many reasons, maybe, maybe a learning disability, maybe some other obstacle, are not going to achieve at the level that one might expect for someone who had that kind of set of learning habits. First of all, we want to acknowledge that, right? We want to honor that. We want to label that. Um, and second of all, we don't want to have to do it in a pretend way, okay? So if your student works like a dog, engages, asks questions, um is self-aware about his or her own learning styles and 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 strengths and 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 struggles. Um, I want to be able to tell the truth about that as a teacher in every way that I can. Instead of fudging the achievement grade in a in a dishonest way. And I don't mean dishonest in in the worst way, right? It's in the most loving kind of dishonesty that students get higher grades because they are participating well, they do their work and they and they fight like dogs for their learning, but sometimes it just doesn't come. And we want to honor that in a a real way. Um, and that's one of the benefits of the learning habits, I think.
Greg, you're on uh Greg, as usual, you're onto something really deep there. And I think what this conversation is touching on is something that's been played out when, actually, when grading theorists talk about this for the past fifty years or so, the two magisterial questions, one, what can we measure and what should we measure? When we're talking about people who are very highly nuanced creatures, right? And um unless you try to disaggregate up the portrait of a student, you're not gonna get the right feedback that you can use to trigger growth as a parent or a student or a teacher. So you know, some theorists say you have to talk about a student's mastery, what they can do, talk about their effort, how hard they tried. Talk about growth trends, whether they went up or down, and how that worked out during the course of a semester. Because if you're not being that subtle, you're gonna miss something. Somebody might master something immediately through talent without having tried at all and not grown at all during a semester, and that's useful feedback for a student to hear and a parent to hear in terms of few future achievement. But a student could falter in mastery but show amazing effort or amazing growth trends, those are powerful indicators too. So the reason I was delighted to see this system uh growing at Shapog, which we call a standards-based type system, is it's trying to be more subtle and nuanced in how it talks about our students and how it builds and creates feedback about what they're able to do. And I think you, I think your question kind of teased some of that out.
Okay.
I'm delighted to have an enlightened board of education here from for for me to talk with. This is terrific. Um, I I have, I have, I have two more slides if uh and and maybe just a couple more points and then a question for the board if if that's okay, if I go on.
But Mike, can I just ask you one more question?
Please.
I I find this whole thing fascinating. I wish I had been able to serve on the committee of to listen to this. It's really interesting stuff. What what I worry about greatly is um is a situation in which we are we are so focused at at these kind of measurements and things that we we lose the students in the mix. Uh I mean, I I, you know, uh saw when I was in school that oftentimes students got lost, particularly students at the high end of the system who had the highest grades. Uh, they they didn't get the kind of attention, the individual attention they needed. As a result, a lot of us uh had to, you know, I mean, look, I I I had a four oh average. I we only A was the highest grade you can get. Nothing was weighted. Uh, and um it didn't mean that I didn't struggle in the first year in university. Um, you know, be- because I could, I couldn't write at the level that my grades indicated I could. And it's because I was the teacher's, the easy one for the teacher, the one that wasn't the problem. And as a result, I think a lot of people at that end got ignored. And I would hate to see that happen in a school like Shapog. And I don't know how you you ensure that, but I think it has something to do with what you're trying to measure here and and how you're trying to approach grades. And maybe you can get to the level of giving those kids, every kid, no matter where they are on the grading scale, that kind of individual attention, certainly in a high school with nine kids per teacher, we should be able to give them that kind of individual attention that that allows um, you know, that allows them to succeed and and not just get grades. I agree with you. Grades can be arbitrary if they're not really focused on what it is you've demonstrated and and what abilities you have. And the higher your grade goes, the harder you should have to work to make to make that level. Otherwise, what's the point? You know, and and the and the lower your grade goes, we need to figure out why. And we need to, you know, we need to see whether there are things other than simply a- academic ability that that impact that, because I bet you there are in almost every case. But I'm not a teacher. What do I know? Thank you.
Well, I think you're right on it. And um, I think that, you know, these descriptors here, first of all, I think to to the credit of everyone here and many others, the kind of attention and focus that you describe, especially on on our strongest students, is is a strength of our school, frankly. And I think that this sort of um emphasis on verbal descriptors of quality work is something that keeps everyone on the hook for all learners. Because it brings us to um the necessity of understanding what quality is, what growth is for a- a- at all the different levels. It doesn't let us off the hook with just calling it an eighty-two or a ninety-seven and moving on. So I I I that I think it's a terrific line of thinking and um I'm glad that that's what we want to do. So, you know, two, one semester in, what are we seeing? Initially, there was a lot of a a student and some parent consternation and and worry about what it would look like to get an A. Uh, that was one of the questions that we got. Uh, there was a lot of concern and worry. Um, and there were a few um challenges uh when a an essay or two or a test or two. Um, uh was a challenge to sort of fit into the idea that we wanted a verbal descriptor of quality. Um, but those were early and and they they were, they have been very few since then. That doesn't mean that someone's not on this Zoom right now, sort of, you know, feeling confused or ticked off about this this uh set of changes, but we certainly have heard a lot less about it and 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 very little recently. Um, and so students are taking it in stride. There's a lot less talk about points. Um, the questions that we get are, you know, how do I show that I learned this? When stu- when a student's not pleased with their grade, the question is is shifting to, you know, how do I show that I understand this? And the question used to be, uh much more frequently, well, how do I get those extra five points to move me from an eighty-nine point three to an eighty-nine point six that will get rounded up to an A minus? And that kind of conversation is not good for anybody. We we have an increased focus on communicating and on uh clarifying learning expectations. We've had significant professional development time, resources um devoted to uh developing our skills and our language and our practices as educators um in the area of what does quality work look like? How do I establish that? How do I build an understanding with students? In some cases, the teacher's just writing. This is what an A looks like. In some pages, click cases, the teacher is showing the students, hey, isn't this really good work? Isn't this a terrific essay? Okay, what makes it a terrific essay? Let's all figure it out. And now what we've done there is described in A together. We've established what our definition of quality work is as a class, and we've all learned something. We we don't, right now, we're not seeing a big impact on grade distribution. I had suspicions that it might become harder to get an A and 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 maybe harder to get an F also. And we're not seeing that. We've done an analysis of of second quarter grades from two thousand nineteen versus second quarter grades from twenty twenty-one uh by department. And it's it's, there's not a clear trend. Some of the departments, the, you know, the grades were up. Some of the departments, the grades were down. Some of the departments, they were even. And there doesn't seem to be a a clear trend, which um, I think means that we're adhering to our Hippocratic goals at the very least. And the next steps for us, uh uh and I want to see if I can communicate the tension that's inherent in in some of our next steps. And it's a tension between mastery. We're an institution that's devoted to student learning, regardless of of the time and energy that it takes. And yet, the the school year is finite. There are a hundred eighty-three days. And June eleventh is graduation day, and your senior project's gotta be done by then. And so how do we resolve the tension between those two ideas? And how do we prepare students for a world that's gonna expect them to meet deadlines and isn't just gonna say, you know, okay, work on your quarterly earnings report until you got it right, and then let me know. However long that takes. The world is in no way going to say that. And and you, you know, college professors, employers aren't gonna say that in any way. And so how do we balance those things? That's a question for us to to continue to dig into. Um, it's related to the idea of of retakes and redos, which we're interested in and we're we're tinkering with in in some ways. Um, but we want to approach intelligently and 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 cautiously. We also are looking at uh separating learning habits from achievement in uh high school grades. Uh, we think that this is is good for students um in the way that it supports motivation to learn. We think that it's good for uh students and and families in the way that it builds clarity and accuracy in grades. But we want to do this carefully, especially because we know um that these are high-stakes grades that these students are 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 getting in classes. And we um, this is not in the short-term uh view. This is not anything that's on the table for even next year, let's say. Um, not at this point at least. And we want input. We we're we're curious about um we're curious about how to strike a balance between mastery and and executive skills. Um, because I don't think, you know, Picasso got any deadlines imposed on him for his work. And he produced some pretty terrific work. And yet, I'm pretty sure that there are a lot of employers um not to mention the IRS, that is gonna expect our graduates to take deadlines seriously. So I'm I'm curious about that uh and and interested in dialogue about balancing those those two ideas and and trying to resolve the tension there. Um, and we're also interested in 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 the reality of what rigor is at at our school, how rigorous a student's experience is uh i- in addition to the perception, because certainly um for for a high school um and maybe to a lesser degree, a middle school, um the perception of rigor is uh is not as important as the reality, but it's important too. Um, and that's one of the things that uh that we're interested in. So that that's the extent of of my presentation. I I I thank the board for its patience. Um, I hope that that was okay in terms of the amount of time that that the board intended to devote to the the topic. It's an important topic, so I I hope that you don't mind it. I'm happy to, Mr. Schels and I am sure uh are are both happy to hear your comments and and questions on these topics and and others.
And if it's okay, I just would like to speak up. I think one of the things I love about this is it's not a final product. That we recognize we're evolving with the students, we're figuring out how are they responding to this. And I really, I think that credit goes to the Shapog administration for making certain that teachers are really having this conversation of what is excellence? What does that look like? Um, because when we quantify things, we may lose some quality of things. So I think that they really have been evolving this process. Um, so what you're seeing is really a well-thought-out system, but it is one that continues to improve.
Justin?
Yeah, uh, and then, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so one of the the best, probably the best, you know, you're asking about rigor. What is the perception of rigor? Um, and one of the the best definitions came from, is she still here, Dr. DeBrito? Um, how deep does my thinking take me in my discussion of my learning? And I think that what you guys have put together will will really um help students achieve that. So I I think it's great what you guys are doing, so.
Thank you. That's a, it's a a great and useful definition. I wanna remember.
I wrote it, yeah, it was from a a committee meeting a couple of months ago. I wrote it down and I've been using it ever since, so.
That sounds like a rap. Oh, no, maybe somebody was raising their hand.
No, I don't think so, but I don't, I also don't see our chairman right now on. I don't know if Greg got kicked off or what the case may be.
No, I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Oops, sorry, you got lost to my screen. Okay, thank you.
Um, okay.
Maybe I could just, ma- maybe I could just say, Greg, that I I appreciate the board's um patience and indulgence and and really the opportunity to uh to work uh for a board of education that is going to to see these changes in a an open-minded light. Um, and uh I I think it's a, it's a very uh enlightened uh perspective that you all take. And we appreciate the um the willingness to to work with us and to and to see some of these uh changes, which we think are progress forward.
Well, um, we're we're certainly gonna remain open-minded until people start hammering us up at meetings. And no, I'm just kidding. Uh, we 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 do take an open mind. We appreciate it. I I, look, I I I I make no secret of the fact that I I really think our schools are excellent, and I think we could be the best. I think we could have the best schools around. And I think part of the way of getting there is being able to get a handle on what what we're measuring, what's valuable, what what constitutes an educated Shapog graduate. And and how do you do it? Uh, I mean, I guess one measure of education is the point at which you realize you don't know everything. And uh I I think that we, what we need to do though is we need to make sure people come out of here not just knowing they don't know anything, but actually knowing something. And that that would be, that would be helpful. Uh, but uh I really appreciate it. I think this is fascinating stuff. Excellent, excellent report. Thank you uh very much. And keep us posted on how and how you do it, how you successful you are, what things you changed along the way in order to meet the realities of of putting something new in there like this. Um, so that's uh, and I I I really don't know how you 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 can do. This is a really difficult task, extremely high level of difficulty. So thank you very much for 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 tackling it. Um, a lot of schools wouldn't have the 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 luxury of being able to to go at something this hard at this level. I think that's a wonderful thing, a testament to your hard work. So thank you very much. Okay, um, if that's all we have on new business, we're gonna move on to the action items. And we have one action item tonight, and that is to consider and if appropriate, approve the transfer of the balance in the district's capital reserve fund to a new money market account at National Iron Bank and to direct the secretary to sign the resolution required to open the account in the form submitted. You know what? I think we're gonna need that um resolution in front of us because I, why, why couldn't I find it?
Nicole, do you have that handy?
Uh, gave it to Deb to put in the packet. Is it in there? Let me look.
I was gonna say, I can also.
I don't have it um scanned outside of the packet. I just have her copy.
Let me take a look and see if I can't get it through the packet.
I I think if we're gonna adopt a resolution, we probably ought to look at it.
I don't see it in there, Nicole.
Oh, great. Um, yeah, I might have emailed it to her. Let me check my email.
And and when you're done with that, Nicole, I have another question for you about this.
You can, I can multitask. You can ask.
All right, well, Alex and I had a really nice conversation about this, and he brought to my attention the fact, and I'm sorry to steal your thunder, Alex. He brought to my attention the fact that it would, we were seeing quite an uptake in the uh in the rates uh for United States Treasury securities uh to the point where um, you know, if if we had a layered portfolio of of one month, three months, six months and one years, we could probably be coming down with an average north of three and a half percent. And so the question is, uh, is i- i- is this account that National Iron is offering still the best deal for us?
Let me, let me correct you, Greg. No, it wasn't three percent. One year is we're yielding point nine one percent. And they, as you got closer, they dropped. Uh, but you could buy treasuries of three months, six months, nine months, a year, and they would probably be yielding somewhere about uh between four and five on balance. Um, and obviously, if each one matured, you would roll it over and buy another year out. Uh, you couldn't do this in the secondary market without paying a commission. But if you did sign up on the account with uh with the treasury, You could work directly with them and and. You'd only buy the initial offering. You wouldn't buy a secondary treasury. You'd buy the initial one. But I think it yields a better yield. But Nicole had feelings about it. She was not so sure. And it may have to do more with just the procedure of having to do it maybe more difficult. Then and time consuming and anyway.
So Greg, to answer your question, and thank you, Alex, for sharing. At the present time, we, if we were to purchase treasury bills, we do it through the bank, through their investment arm. And the fee that would be charged to us would offset any potential uptick in the small. Amount we would gain by doing that. I did look into doing it for us on our behalf as a district through Treasury Direct. I'm not sure that there's another way to do it. You need to set up a district account there. And then there's lots of offerings. And like Alex said, we'd have to watch the the timing to get in on the initial offerings, and then I'd have to. You know, do the buy and sell orders, which really isn't necessarily something that's ever been in my wheelhouse. I told Alex I could look into it to see how complicated it is. I don't know that the rates currently warrant us, you know, setting aside. A bunch of my time to try to figure this out at this particular moment. But it is something I'll look into. I don't think, however, that that these have to be too, that this has to be exclusive from moving the account. We can move the money. We can move the account to National Iron into a money market, and then we can invest in treasury bills anytime we want to. It's that one doesn't preclude the other.
You know, it's it seems to me, Nicole, I I think, well, this is a great idea. I think the problem is is that you're not a professional investment person. And I think once you start, once you stop relying on professional investment people and start freelancing things. That's when the the problems occur, because it's it's an unfair ask. It would really be an unfair ask. And so I I guess the real question is. Is the premium on treasuries enough to justify the expense of purchasing them through a through a professional, where if there's a problem, they're the one that's going to be, you know, hung out to dry? I guess the answer is what you're saying is no. If if we were to buy them, the premium would would erase most, if not all, of the advantage of rate. And so at that point, it sounds more like we should go with the money market and have it in someone else's hands to deal with. I I'm not saying this is not a a lack of confidence in you. I think it would be an unfair ask. For you to be doing something in an area that's not within your wheelhouse. In other words, you you're not, you're not trained and insured to make these decisions.
I do think that we, it's something that, you know, when the time comes that the treasury bills do inch up a little more, and it makes sense to pay the premium to. For someone to buy them on our behalf. Then it's going to be a good time to invest in T bills. I just, I don't think that the rates are high enough yet to justify someone else. Purchasing them on our behalf, and I'm not particularly confident in being able to do it on my own.
Okay, well, that really, I'm I'm just, while you were talking, I looked it up. One year T bills now are yielding one point oh five percent. Six months are yielding point six seven and three months are yielding point three six. You wouldn't have to sell them. They just mature. So the only thing you'd be required to do is buy them. And you know exactly what you're going to get is interest rates. And you're and you just, you hold them till they're mature. Anyway. It was just a thought.
Okay, all right, interesting. Okay, do we have a motion to transfer the balance of the district capital reserve fund to a new money market account at National Iron Bank and direct the secretary to sign the resolution? If we could have a motion, then we can look at the resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Jen, seconded by Pete. Now, why don't we put the resolution on the board so we can figure it out what it is we're voting on? And then once we look at that, I'll call on John.
Let me know when you want me to scroll up.
Okay. All right, maybe you should start scrolling. You know, I have a question for you, Nicole. They have, they have things on here that you can. Things on here that you can do and things on here you don't want to do. I I kind of wonder if we should not strike four, five and six and seven.
You have to put on the left. So if on the first page. Megan's A and B, your C.
Right.
Here, you put where the which powers those people get. So this is limiting the powers to two and three for the three of us.
Okay, I guess that's okay.
I mean, if you wanted to, you could fill in line four, none, none, none. But but I mean, I think it's.
Yeah, I I I think I just leave it the way it is. I just, I'm not worried about us. I'm worried about somebody making a mistake at a bank, you know, can happen.
Keep going.
Yeah.
This looks like a very standard form.
It does.
It is National Iron standard form. They don't, they don't have a state agency or a municipal. Form. That's why we're using the corporate one, but in the preamble, they define us as a district.
Okay.
I might cross out the effect of previous resolutions. Just so there's no mistake, but there it, well, is there any previous resolution with Iron Bank?
There is for other accounts, yes.
Oh, there is. Yeah, okay, then leave it exactly the way it is. Yeah.
Okay. So the motion's been made and seconded. Does anyone have any questions? John?
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts, and both Alex and Greg raised some good points. I mean. We could be chasing our tail forever, trying to find the highest yield. Return on our savings. You could hire a full time person trying to keep up with where to put the money. I guess we have to. Come to the. Decision as to what we're willing to accept for a return and. Right now, it's point two five percent, a quarter of a percent of one percent. On the one point two million in total. And what is the term?
There is no term in a money, money market.
Okay, so it just sits there, John.
But the but the point two five is fixed for how long?
So a money market account fluctuates with the market, but currently the point two five is negotiated because. Most money markets are getting a little bit lower. So when I talked to Steve Cornell, he set our our bottom at point two five. So it'll go up.
It is a variable rate. And but totally insured.
Well, no, it's not insured by the FDIC. What it is, is it's insured by some kind of colloque, some group of banks that. It's it's not, it's not FDI insured, but it but it's insured by banks. I don't quite, I mean, Nicole might be able to better explain how it works. It's kind of a freelance thing that these banks did in order to protect money markets.
So there's a a program that that banks belong to, they collectively belong to called SEDARs. It's an ICS program, and they they bundle all of their deposits and then do sweep sweeps to all different institutions at night. So that each holding in each institution is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or less, so that. All of the sweeps that are made to the deposits that are being swept out to other institutions are fully insured. And then they're pulled back the next day and swept out again that afternoon.
So in your mind, there's no danger of. Something catastrophic happening. The banks go belly up or whatever, and we lose the whole bundle.
Well, and with the SEDARs program, it's the FDIC insurance protects it, so it's as protected as any other FDIC account.
Yeah, so I guess I misspoke. It's not that it's not FDIC insured. It's just that it's not directly FDIC insured, not an account that's directly FDIC insured. They have to do all these machinations, moving money around in order to make sure that it that when the. When the, when the bell rings or when the music stops, that it's that it's in an FDIC assured account. Although it might not be there tomorrow.
This, the town of Washington currently participates in this program with National Iron, and I believe. Either Roxbury or Bridgewater does, not both of them. I can't remember which one. But they have the same auditor that we have. And their auditor has, so I talked to our auditor about this program, and lots of auditing companies have vetted this program and find it to be. A great way to to get these funds that municipalities hold insured through the FDIC.
Yeah, in in the fifty years I've been doing investment, I only know of one money market fund that ever had any problems. Money market funds. Basically, you each share is a dollar, it stays at the dollar. Years ago, maybe three decades ago, a money market fund out of Washington. Had problems and it dropped to like ninety-eight per cents on the dollar. And but that was a fluke one time in fifty years that I'm aware of is happening. And they only lost two percent.
Uh, Mary.
As in, Nicole, as in other money market accounts, can they be, can the money be taken out at any point?
Yes.
Yes, so that, so if we find out that these treasury accounts are are better. You can change your mind at any time, and we could move the money there.
Correct. We can use funds that are in the money market account to purchase treasury bills. Yes.
Yeah, the one, the one thing you can't do, though, with treasuries is is, you know, you buy them, you buy a lot of them, and then what happens is you can't exit one until it matures. So you you would have to, you would have to time when your money was coming out. I'm sorry, Alex.
You can.
Hold on a second. I can't hear Alex. Alex.
You can sell them at any time in the secondary market.
Yeah, you can sell them in the secondary market, but you're not going to get your full. You're going to take a little of a hit.
No, you're not going to take a hit except for the commission. What happens? You buy a T bill, it matures at a hundred dollars. You buy it at ninety-eight. And a year later, they give you a hundred. So you've made two percent on your money. Six months from now, that bill will be priced at ninety-nine dollars. So if you sold it, you'd get ninety-nine dollars, you'd get a dollar of interest or one percent.
Less your commission, and you'd be buying a commission on, you'd be buying a commission on the entry end to buy it and then a commission.
Well, not if you do it directly through the treasury direct.
Right, I understand that, but if you're, if you're doing it through a a third party, you could be paying.
Pay commission both sides.
It it's not as easy. A money market, you just simply make a withdrawal.
Actually, my my point was that that there is no reason not to do this at this time, to put it in a money market account. And and if Nicole sees things are changing significantly. Then we can always move the money out of the money market account and into these treasury accounts. But we don't, but for now, this, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't do this, put the money in the money market account, and I think that's what we should vote on now.
I think you're absolutely right, Mary.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand and keep it held up. And Danielle, tell us when you've got everybody counted.
I've got everybody.
Okay, all those opposed, all those opposed, all those abstaining. So it's unanimous. Thank you very much. If there is no objection. We'll consider this meeting adjourned at eight fifty-five. I'd just like to call everyone's attention to the fact that the retreat scheduled for next Monday has been canceled. And so our next meeting will be the district budget hearing on March twenty-eighth and the Board of Education meeting to follow at seven thirty on March twenty-eighth. Any objection to adjourning? Hearing none? Thank you very much. We are adjourned, and next time we'll see you in person.